May we request the Honorable Sheikh Ustaz Faidz allowed in to lead us in the invocation? And please remain standing for the singing of the national anthem and the Bangsa Morohin.
Mala pabayan ang pambansang awit ng pininas.
The honorable members of the parliament, the honorables Abbas Ahmed, Abbas Harod,
President.
Abbas Nurgeneh,
President.
Abbas Basit Sharid, Abu Kujin, Adio Jarrahman Talonto, Ahra Tula, Alani Elais, Alawu Bithai, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang, Ali Edi Mapak,
President.
Ambonko Suato, Ang patuan Baytan, Anayatin Susana, Asmawil Musima,
President.
Kalidog Ali Pangalian, Mara Hamida Milodin,
President.
Asmaan Anna Tarhaka, Uraha Nagahar, Atkau Bay Malihat,
President Po.
Dantamon Latif Bay Sara,
President.
Yamlam Musa, Dipatuhan Sa Prula, Ibrahim Aho, Ismail Haji Adulajis, Gaya Kadula, Gera Edward, Hasim Abdullah,
President.
Hasan Atimil, Iqbal Mua Gheer,
President.
Ismail Rasool,
President.
Jajuri Raisa,
President.
Jakilan Muslimin,
President.
Karon Bay Nod, Lidasan Muslini, Longdon Mustafa,
President.
Lorretta Osi Reban, Makaku Angdurauf, Makapaharad Gula,
President.
Makaraya Chaber, Makasalong Marjani, Morodatudatukadafe.
President.
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 Metawil Malik,
President.
Mastura Datutokau, Mastura Siti Syara, Mawali Lamil Bahar, Mitibanggak.
Yung leme sa pinggung ko, nadaw sa minas.
Ujengsi Grasul, Mujahid Datul Mohni, Godios Hussein,
President.
Oranan Soed,
President.
Pakasa Pobayda,
President.
Pak Abduluhab, Pangandaman Nabila Margarita,
President.
Ramos Di Amila, Reban Revisa Nasir,
Sir Sartan Reban, President.
Nakarmotayaw, Salida Zaid, Sally Al Staid, Saliga Romeo,
President.
Salit Ali, Santi Ali, Salip Utuma, Setaral Sir.
President.
President.
In disatkar, President.
Tani, President.
Seba Omar, President. Seba Romeo, Sheikh Stae, Silongan Aida, Sulaiman Ali, Tago Bay Salid,
President.
Tanah Bill, Ujya Sahi, Ulama Melanyo,
President.
Usman Asfar, Jacob Hamad,
President.
UK Narciso.
Mr. Speaker, fifteen members inside the plenary hall and fourteen members joining the assembly room, or a total of fifty-five members of this parliament responded to the call. The doctor certified the presence of the parliament.
The certification of the secretary general as to the existence of the quorum, we, the, this special session is now called to order. What is the pressure of the majority, floor leader?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Honorable Speaker, Ali Pangalian Balindo, First Parliament today is our special session on birthday. This is the information that the chief minister, the speaker of the parliament, twenty-one. This special session, Mr. Speaker, is the DTA cabinet bill number one.
Requested.
DTA cabinet bill number one three nine, an act appropriating the sum of five billion pesos as twenty twenty special development fund or SDF, and the sum of five billion pesos as twenty twenty-one SDF and for other purposes. Author is the government of the day.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, as stated, it is a bill from the government of the day. Again, if any members of the parliament from this August party would like to be co-authored, just signify their interest to the.
This is certified as urgent, right?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is certified as urgent on the letter. The letter of the chief minister to the speaker of the parliament dated October one, two thousand thirty-one.
The letter is submitted to the secretary general.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, minute suspension.
Yeah, session suspended for five minutes. Session resumes. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we deliver this sponsorship speech, may I relinquish my majority floor leader to the majority poll for the day? We respectfully recognize MP Muslini Lidasan.
MP Muslini Lidasan is now designated as floor leader for the day.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, presiding officer, may we recognize the majority floor leader to read the sponsorship bill. Please.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Mr. Speaker, may I proceed? May I proceed, Mr. Speaker?
You may now proceed. This is now the second stage of this bill.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. To the honorable Speaker, Ali Pangalian Balindo, Honorable Deputy Speaker, and now Presiding Officer, Attorney General Merseba. To my esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Good afternoon. To stay true to our own brand of moral governance, there is a need for us to properly account for the resources available for our people, among which is the black grant. The Bangsa Moro government's share from the national taxes collected within the BARM region, the regional taxes we have collected, and also the national subsidies we receive from the national government. Among the national subsidies we receive from the national government is the Special Development Fund or SDF. Pursuant to section two, article fourteen of Republic Act number eleven zero five four, or the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, the national government shall provide a special development fund, SDF, to the Bangsa Moro government for the rebuilding, rehabilitation, and development of its conflict-affected communities. The amount equivalent to fifty billion pesos. At five billion pesos per year for a period of ten years from the ratification of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law shall be allocated for this purpose. Under section six, article thirteen of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, the utilization of SDF shall be in accordance with the Bangsa Moro Development Plan to be adopted by the Bangsa Moro government. The BDP two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two was adopted, the Bangsa Moro Development Plan, and approved by the Bangsa Moro Economic and Development Council and by this August party on June five, two thousand twenty, and July three, two thousand twenty, respectively. Consequently, a technical working group on Special Development Fund, SDF, DWG, was constituted through BARM Special Order Number zero zero four dated June eleven, two thousand twenty, with the task to facilitate the preparation, consolidation, and packaging of SDF-supported programs, projects, and activities for fiscal to twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. After the submission of the documentary requirements. set by the Department of Budget and Management of the National Government, which includes an improved cash program among others. The twenty twenty STF amounting to five billion pesos was released to the bar. The special development fund being a resource available for use would mean that there is a need for us to pass an appropriations law. Defining the purpose for which this fund shall be used. This is why I present before this August body, Mister Speaker. A proposed legislation appropriating two thousand twenty special development fund amounting to five billion pesos. Mister Speaker, I now stand and speak before you and my distinguished colleagues. Please sponsor this bill entitled an act appropriating the sum of five billion pesos as twenty twenty special development fund and the sum of five billion pesos as twenty twenty-one STF for other purposes and for other purposes. Under this bill, Mister Speaker, we will emphasize the purpose for which the fund shall be used and that is for the rebuilding, rehabilitation and development of conflict-affected communities in the Bangsa moral autonomous region and Muslim religion. Undeniable, there is still, there is still an ongoing need to help ensure that the communities most adversely affected by conflicts from the past will be able to rise up from their current condition. Where there were livelihoods lost, structures destroyed, communities and families suffered. There will be programs and projects funded by STF to be devoted. Assisted in section six, article thirteen of the Bangsa moral organic law and also the provision of the National Government General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty twenty, section two of this proposed bill shall state that the utilization shall be in accordance with the Bangsa moral development plan. As adopted and approved by the Bangsa moral Economic and Development Council. And the Bangsa moral transition authority parliament on June five, twenty twenty and July three, respectively. Also. Worth it to be presented is the proposed provision governing the time during which the twenty twenty STF shall be valid for obligation and remain available for disbursement. Considering the remaining time for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it is deemed beneficial for the Bangsa moral that the twenty twenty STF be made available for release and disbursement for the purpose specified until December thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Appropriations for infrastructures, capital outlets shall be valid for obligation until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. While the completion of construction inspection and payment shall be made not later than June thirty, twenty twenty-three. On the other hand, Mister Speaker, appropriations for MOOE and other capital outlays items shall be, shall likewise be valid for obligation until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. While the delivery inspection and payment shall be made not later than March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. This proposed bill, Mister Speaker, will ensure that we comply with all the requirements as set for in the Bangsa moral organic law and other national legislations like the General Appropriation Act for fiscal year twenty twenty. Moral governance calls for a higher standard of governance which requires that all our noble intentions for the good of our people are coupled with right and proper manner or way of doing things. Moral governance called for the pursuit of our aspirations to be done in ways which are in accordance with the rules guidelines, guidelines and standards set by law. Laws nevertheless are mere codification of the collective moral standards and values we possess. And here in the Bangsa moral government, we do what is right, legal and proper. As such, Mister Speaker, I invite all of my esteemed colleagues to join me in this result and support the passage of this bill all for the Bangsa moral people. Sukran and wasalan, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, with the arrival of our deputy majority floor leader, Member of the Parliament, Mangoda Dato, I therefore relinquish my task as the uh, majority floor leader of the day, Mister Speaker. Thank you.
The gentleman from Buluhan is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, Mister Speaker, I move to amend the order of business, Mister Speaker, for the second stage and further move, Mister Speaker, to include the sponsorship speech.
There's a motion to amend the order of business and to include the sponsorship speech of the Ali as part of the presentation.
Done.
There any objection? The motion is by adopted.
Mister Speaker, I move to refer this bill to the committee on the
Finance.
Finance, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the
Done.
The meeting element number one three nine to the committee on finance. There being objection, the same will be referred to the committee on finance.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend this session until further notice.
Until Wednesday.
Until Wednesday.
This session is suspended until one o'clock Wednesday after.